So are we still waiting for somebody or are we going to start?
We're just going to go ahead and start. We don't have a quorum. So we're going to treat this more like a workshop. But if you could just read the Zoom statement, Josh?
Sure. This is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. The session is being audio recorded. Please be advised that today we are also recording the video of this proceedings. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting to ensure sound quality. The default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting. The meeting is open to the public but is not a public hearing. Therefore, no members of the public may speak unless specifically invited to do so. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the chair. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about the process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 after the meeting has ended. Okay, we're ready to start?
Yes, hi. I'm town attorney Rob Avina, and I know I'm going to read off folks and just chat with you for a moment. I have been town attorney, and as Josh knows, and Kathy Nuland worked with the town now since 2000. Yeah, about 2000, year 2000. And I've been very privileged to do so. What I wanted to do today was just go over some basic areas of your position and your jobs and introduce again the staff that you're working with and how much that, how important that is to what you guys do. Okay? So let me just check again here as we sort of call for the roll call or who do we have at this moment? So go ahead.
Joshua Friedman.
Here.
Catherine Nuland. Present, who got you? Yeah, she's right there. Dan Darling, absent. Michelle Cripps, absent. Warren McKenzie.
Present.
Sorry, I was on mute.
There she is.
Mary Eske, absent. Danielle McCarty, absent. And Darcy Van Ness, absent.
All right, so I'm just going back. So I know Josh Wright and Kathy, and then Warren. Warren, yep. So everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. And I want you to know, because it doesn't sound like there's any barking dogs, that if you can stay, you don't have to mute, because I think it's a small enough group. And then if we get too much background, we'll let you know. But that way I can have more of a back and forth with you folks and we can exchange ideas a little bit easier. So again, what I'd like to do today, and I know it's September, but I'm sort of introducing it as, you know, it's September, you know, all my three school-going children are off to colleges and high school. Kind of a new year feeling, and that's kind of how we want to approach you folks at this point. Everybody is on the board, it's an elected position. I think anyone who's now up for reelection is not until, not this November, obviously, but next November are the municipal elections. And you folks alternate, so you have one, two, three, four, five folks that'll be up next November, and one, two, three folks who will be on until 2023 and have just been reelected. So I just want to kind of reintroduce, which I think Kathy and Josh are a little bit familiar with, all the concepts that we deal with as a zoning board of appeals. And the fact that, you know, when they're here with us today, both Anna and Jill are sort of our new new staff. And we've worked with over the years Tom Lane and Josh and different recording secretaries. But I think we wanted to reinforce with you all today that, you know, this is the team. And when you need to get ahold of us, obviously, you can check for me anytime through the staff, and then the staff is always ready to answer your questions. From a freedom of information perspective, I think it's important to stress that you do have access to town staff. So as you look at your applications or you look at your agenda, you look at some backup. If you have any questions, go through staff, and then if staff would like to direct that question to me, they'll decide whether to give me a call or have you actually call me if it's, let's for instance, a conflict, which I really didn't, wasn't going to get into today. But we all know that that's an important consideration. Waterford, we're a pretty small town. So that when you do have a conflict of interest, review the ethics, which we do have an ethics ordinance, review the town ordinance, which is a simple one about bias and financial interest. But most importantly, if you have a conflict of interest question, always check with me. It's really easy to do. Check with staff, get my email, or give me a personal call. The only way I can really do your own personal conflict of interest is one-on-one. It's not a board decision. Each member has to speak up and say, "Tonight, I'm refusing myself on application number 13. I would ask the chair, Mr. Friedman, to please appoint someone in my place," and that's why we have alternates. And I don't know how many times I say to commissions, that's what we have alternates for. Whenever you're in doubt, go outside, you know, take a look at the stars, and don't worry about that particular application. It always works better than the other way around, where I had a member not of this board but of another board sue in a very, very hotly high damages type of case because of a possible conflict. So we don't want to go there. So when in doubt, study the applications ahead of time, check on any budding neighbors, see whether you recognize them, see whether you recently closed a house for them, whatever you do in life. You don't want to have any personal issue with a neighbor to the variance request or the, obviously, the applicant themselves, or even sometimes the presenters. If you're, you know, if you know who the professionals are and you're having work done by that certain profession. And I'm always there, maybe too much, but I'm always available to everybody, all the boards in town. You call me directly whenever you think there's a question. But generally, the rule is, if you have a question in your head, don't participate. We should have other folks ready to go for you. And the sooner you tell us that, the sooner we can make sure that another alternate is ready to go. So what I'd like to cover today, more than just conflicts, obviously, is again reintroduce the team that's working with you. Jill and I are starting to work together more on what is going to be in front of you folks. And Anna's helping us to get the schedule ready and to be working in a very predictable manner. So today, I wanted to go through those procedures with you and get your feedback on some of my thoughts. Go through the kind of public hearings that you always have to hold. You're an unusual board that way. Everything you do is a public hearing after notice to the applicant, notice to the neighbors, and opening the public hearing and presenting the evidence. So I just want to talk about that for a minute. Obviously, your CEO is a very important person in this whole role. She is the person who reviews the application and submits a report that you will be having at your meetings, and she is to be introduced at the hearing. She is open to be cross-examined by the applicant and by any neighbors. I know we're on Zoom, which we'll talk about maybe later, that that is all fascinating. But we also want to look forward to the day when we're all back in the room together, which I hope is not forever. The second thing I want to talk about, a little touch upon, is the law, which I'm going to start with really, and then we're going to go through why that's important and then go to procedure, is that in the law, you really have a kind of three things to think about. So I kind of line the books up here. It's not all of the books, but we're really talking about Robert's rules when we talk about procedures. The town has pretty much adopted Robert's rules. Whenever there's not a specific rule that you're following, you're following Robert's rules. Good thing to know, and you can look them up on the web. Even while you're during the meeting, it's pretty easy to do. The other thing is, you know, Connecticut practice for Fuller, we always want you to know and understand what it means to be considering especially a variance in your processes. And then lastly, which is a little unusual, not most towns have this, but Waterford does, is you should all be extremely familiar, not only with all the zoning regulations, but also the very last pages of those zoning regulations. So you guys are actually in our zoning regulations under section 27, zoning board of appeals. And the court has been quite specific about those rules, and I'm going to talk to you about that in a second, on how we have to treat those rules that are in our zoning regulations and how they apply to you folks. So in the big sense again, and do I still have Warren or is he just on the phone? So.
He's back.
Okay, there you are. So I just want to read a couple sentences to get us going here as far as, you know, what you're doing as a board. And so you folks all know that you have to, you have to consider a variance, and whether you consider it is because of your power under 8-6 for the Connecticut general statutes. What I call a zoning board of appeals is sort of a mini, you're all mini judges. You're judging, you have judicial power, not, you're not looking at sort of an administrative function. You're acting as judges as to whether or not a variance is appropriate. So it's a very important rule, and what you have to do is meet at least two conditions for the variance to be granted. The variance must not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan and applying the requirements of the zoning regs must cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan. And the board can consider information that came from mewing the property. I think we talked about that before. You have no trouble once you get your applications. I would not do it as a group, but you have no legal impediment to cruising by Hay Street or Cross Road or, you know, Roke Ferry and checking out the property upon which the variance request had been made. That information you glean and your own personal testimony can be added to the hearing, and that's permissible. In this part, we're going to talk about the second use. Whenever a zoning board of appeals grants a variance, it is required, not, it's not a shy, not a maybe. It is required to state the reasons for its action and specifically describe the exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship, which Kathy and Josh both know I usually mean legal hardship, and that, on which the decision is based, and the sections of the zoning regulations which are varied. So of course, when I talk about zoning regulations, you should know them backwards and forwards, that this application tonight is in the R40, I've got it in front of me, or it's on my phone, and I know that the setbacks are 30 feet, the side yard is 15 feet, and the zoning compliance area of square footage is X. That really is something that everybody in front of you expects, that you're familiar with, or you have that page open for that particular application. So unfortunately, this does require a little homework. Now, this is really the part where, let's just say the rubber hits the road, is that there are two things you really need to think about in Waterford. And the case law is, however, where the zoning regulations specifically require the board to make a written finding detailing the special circumstances which amount to hardship and did not apply to other properties in that region, it was held that the board improperly granted a variance without making the finding. So there's a court case out there, which is an appellate court case, that in Greenwich, the variance request that had been approved was overturned simply because the findings weren't in the record of the ZPA. Forget the hardship or the reasoning, we didn't have the findings. And Waterford is like Greenwich. We have a call room in a minute, but we have A through many letters, A through K or so. And then terms and conditions we'll talk about, but A through K are specific findings that we have to have on the record, or the variance will never be upheld. Okay? The second kind of rule of variances is, if the law, which is, you know, I'm a lawyer, and you guys are acting as judges, which 100% of all the judges in Connecticut are lawyers and have to pass the bar. If the law is strictly followed, very few variance applications should be granted, because hardship as defined by case law rarely exists. And I have seen case after case where the courts reiterate that in their minds, if a zoning board of appeals is hitting 80 or 90% projections of variances, that's about normal. That's about where they should be. And you would think, well, have they relaxed it? Well, I'll tell you two things. Number one is the most recent appellate in Connecticut Supreme Court decisions have made it even harder and have said, you know, basically speaking, if there's a reasonable use of the property as it is, then in most cases, there's no reason, legal reason for hardship or variance. That is so strict, when you think about it, that the Connecticut Superior Municipal Attorneys and the lobbyists up in Hartford are actually working on, perhaps, we don't have it yet, but they have floated last session amendments to legal hardship in Connecticut, because folks just can't get over that whether Walmart is asking for a variance in the setback on the South North Parkway, or someone is coming in because they want an extra-large garage and they can't fit it without affecting their side yard setback. But those two are actually the same type of variance under the law. That we may not be happy with Walmart, because the building will be closer to the road, and some of us don't like that. But we may be fine with the guy down the street, neighbors didn't seem to have a problem, and the garage will be oversized and encroached on the side yard. There is, I can tell you as a town attorney, there's no legal difference. So that would make us all pause that having three or four variances in front of you in a given month or over several months is a lot of work, because each request has to be looked at under these standards, and we have to come up with a way for the staff to serve you, because you folks are laypeople and you're not getting paid for this. And we need to help you to get through this rather challenging job that you have. It's one of the rare jobs in town, I guess, what am I trying to think of? The Board of Tax Review, which I'm often working with. I mean, they often have to sit there night after night and tell folks, "Sorry, but your assessment looks pretty good to us. You know, we're not going to give you any relief." So maybe the two boards we have in town that say that often are the Board of Tax Review and the ZPA. As we've talked about, I know with Kathy and Josh in the past, you are more likely, almost in every circumstance, to get overturned by a court despite your town attorney's best efforts, if an appeal is filed of any monthly decision you make, if you've granted a variance than if you've denied one. Almost every neighbor in every case I've ever read who appeals the granting of his neighbor's variance wins. It's very few cases where it's said, "Oh, no, that is, that situation was so peculiar to that lot and was of such a legal hardship nature that the variance should stand." Now, you guys all know that the courts try to be gentle on local commissions, and they're going to bend over backwards to look at your record and support you. You're one of the few commissions that are boards, that the courts are actually pretty tough. And I read you that Greenwich decision where they just started the whole case and said, "We don't see the findings required by their zoning regulations or it overturned." I think the decision was, you know, two pages long. So they didn't even get into the merits, because the board did not follow its procedure.
Real quick, could I get the case number of that civil case in Greenwich, so I could look that up and read it?
Oh, yeah. Gross, G-R-O-S-S, versus Town of Greenwich. 171 Connecticut, 326.
Did you know the year by any chance?
1976.
1976, thank you.
Year, if I recall. And so, just again, I'm quoting from the case, out of the case, in this law book called Fuller on Planning and Zoning. But I will double-check with you, but I'm confident that that was the finding. Okay, and you may find different facts in there that we can talk about later. But just the general idea, okay, and I can mean for you as a town attorney, that we're about to look at what our regulations require you guys to do. All right? So that's pretty much what the case was trying to say, is that if you have specific regulations in your town, on top of the state statute, you have to follow your regulations. So let's turn to that while we're in this section. So section 27, zoning board of appeals of the regulations, say, and then repeat the state statute. You have all the powers and duties that you have. We may take some time, when there's more than 30 of you here, to at some point go through the next section, which talks about use variances. Use variances are pretty rare. We don't see too many in Waterford. And whenever you get them, believe me, I'll probably be advising you. So we won't worry about the use variance at the moment. The next page, 27.5, is called criteria for decisions. And those criterias are labeled A through K. So under the current law, which I don't think is going to change on this point, we really need to help you to make those findings of A through K whenever you're considering a variance, right? If you're, if the straw vote, and we'll go over that in a second, but if the sentiment of the commission is, the applicant has not met his burden, then these requirements are not, you know, you still consider them, but they're not as critical as when you go to grant a variance. And when you grant a variance, we're going to want a list that you've considered all the factors A through K, and that in consideration of those factors, the variance should be granted. Okay? So I'm not going to read every single one of them, but I want you guys to study them. And I'll talk in a second about how we're going to treat those requirements. But the Town of Waterford has imposed on my board, the ZPA, the additional burden of not just finding a legal hardship under case law and under the statute, but that you also find A through K. All right. So going back again to why we're here today is, is that given some of these challenges, and I'm just here to say, because I follow the law as a municipal attorney, it's only ratcheted up higher. We need to, we need to cross those high jump bars in order to act as a legal commission and grant this relief. Relief is something people are seeking. We can only give it if it's legally possible. So we have to go over our procedures.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who establishes the regulations for decisions A through K that are particular to the town? How were those established?
Great question. So with us today is our planning director, Abby. And what we're going to talk about in a second is, and this is one role I'd like you folks to take on. You are a bit of a sounding board for the town's zoning. And I'm going to take that in two ways. First, answer Josh's question. If you think this criteria is in any way outdated or improper or something that you guys think is not something you want to be considering when you go through your variance, let us know. It can go into the hopper for the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider changes in the town's regulations. This section is allowed by law to be in the town zoning regulations. You guys might think, "Well, wait a minute, that's the Planning and Zoning Commission." But in the town, the Planning and Zoning Commission has the power to enact these reservations, these regulations. So if you want to change them, then we need to contact them and put in your change proposals. How's that?
Okay, so the zoning commission is made up of town members that represent the town as well. So the rules have been put forth by the town members, not a hired zoning staffer.
They vote on them, Josh, eventually, right? So they have the power.
Right, okay.
You guys can refer to them sometimes in a meeting and say, "I didn't do this. You know, I didn't create section 8-32 that says you need a 50-foot backyard." That's the right, right? So no, you didn't start there. You guys are there to review those regs for a variance, but you didn't create them. The second important thing, though, is what I meant by a sounding board, and I really need, you know, your experience in this, especially Kathy and Josh, because, you know, you've been there longer, is if you guys keep a log or a mental list of saying, you know, something, we should really talk to Abby or Rob Avina or somebody. This is like the 13th variance we've gotten in the L10 zone, and somebody can't survive with a 50-foot front yard setback or something, then we should look at that zone, right? And we should tell the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know something, we're getting an awful lot of, you know, applications, because people can't live with that restriction in their zone, right? But you guys would help us know that by being the, you know, canary in the coal mine, that you're seeing an awful lot of it. Okay? And I know your staff can also do that. Because I'd rather go through the front door and see if there's a problem in that zone than having people have to be forced through the back door to say, "How do I deal with this?" Right? So you may not be able to grant relief, but you can write a memo and say, "Why do we keep getting these? Can somebody look at this reg?" How's that? So these are kind of other powers that you guys hold, is to be a critique of the regulations that everybody has to follow. Okay? So why I go back to procedure now is that I would like to get more in the rhythm with Jill, who's not been here, has been here since the spring, and with Anna, who started last fall, to work up your agendas and your review of the applications and proposed findings, so that we come up with a form that acts kind of like a, you know, a check form for you guys to have, so that these findings are not overly burdensome. So that when the decision and motion comes out, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, the motion includes the findings that you need to make, that you've already discussed with us, and that we're comfortable helping you kind of fill the box out. Okay? So that would mean that every time you make a decision, it's prepackaged, and you have the findings you need by law. And boy, I can't think of a better reason to have a town attorney. My job is to help you to just have a consistency of how you're making your decisions and that you're following the regs in the section. Okay? So why that's important is that, especially Zoom is probably doubly challenged, is that whether we're considering, and I know two of you were with me then, I believe, when we were looking at the Stonyton Institute requests for numerous variances up on Roke Ferry across from St. Paul's Church, and I gave, you know, newcomer Jill a copy of that, that Mike Litten and I wrote up. I think it was a three or four-page decision for you to determine whether or not we were going to consider the variances on that project. That, in effect, is still a very similar form to what we need to look at when you look at variances. Now, that one brought out hundreds of people, and we had all this law and days of testimony. But it was still a basic, hey, can we do this on that property? Right? So when we look at the form we'd like to use, we want to have something that, you know, we can quickly refer to and that you guys can use. And because every meeting you have is usually call to order, do a quorum, do your minutes, let's get into the noticed and published public hearings. You guys are doing more public hearings than almost anybody in the town hall, because you suddenly go ahead and do, let's say, two or three public hearings that night. So working with Josh, who's the chair, you know, we're going to continue to work on, okay, you know, what are the simple procedures that I'll have written down and that Jill can make available so that we, you know, make sure that we list the evidence, the exhibits that the applicant has already brought in. Certified mail, obviously, we check on. We check on any other letters that came in and maybe even read them in, because often there aren't that many, and especially Zoom, so everybody can hear the letters. And then we finally turn to the applicant and say, "Would you please like to make your presentation now?" And they obviously have an opportunity to go forward. The board has an opportunity to question. Neighbors who called in or if we're physically present have a right, have a right to cross-examine the applicant and their experts and the owner and ask any questions. They don't really have a right to ask questions of you. They have the right to ask questions of the applicant. They don't really have a right to ask questions of you, they have the right to ask questions of the applicant. And if they ask you folk questions, it's totally up to the chair as to whether you have any back and forth. Either the applicant or the neighbors or any other person, interesting person. Um, now, what I'm suggesting at this point is doing the public hearing itself is an important. Get it in the box kind of feature. We did the certified mails, we did the notice, we made sure the exhibits are in. We heard from the applicant, we saw the map, we looked at the survey, we heard the letters from folks. We got cross examination, we had testimony, we had discussion by the board and questions. Often, to me, that's a nice work. Depending obviously on the severity and and intensity of the application. You often want to say, wow. Thank you very much, everybody, you know, it's been an hour. Uh, motion to close the hearing, motion accepted. You've done the bulk of your work as a Z P A, you've had a nice legal, efficient public hearing. And you closed that public hearing. And what I often say to people is to do due diligence and and be respectful to the people who spoke for the applicant. You say, you know. That was very good, we're going to package this up, we're going to reflect on it. We're going to talk at the end of the public hearings tonight to our staff. We may discuss some informal discussion of which way we're leaning or and I'll talk to you about that in a minute. And then we're going to have them go to draft decision. And we'll be reviewing those decisions next month. That that is what I'd like to see in the majority of cases so that. We are on the same page, everybody can gather up the evidence that was in the public hearing. And then we can have, you can have a discussion and vote at your next meeting. Um, it's not like we have to do it every time, but it's pretty much the way the staff can catch up with you. Get a motion in draft, and I'll talk about that now. What I mean by that is. If there's a motion that the board's going to consider and we don't vote. The motion is going to say, you know. Move to grant, not grant. A variance in the following matter under the following criteria. And then we're going to list those A through K criteria. And then we're going to list a possible legal hardship at the bottom, which is required by law. You have to have your legal hardship and it has to be expressed in your motion. So the legal hardship, which I know in the past we've talked about. It's a triangular lot, you know, with substandard frontage. Uh, it uh, it's a nonconforming lot, but it's never been built on and it needs to have a reasonable use. Um, you know, there are numerous actual legal reasons to grant a hardship. Uh, but they don't, they don't come along now. It's not because my grandmother wants to move in with us and we don't have enough square footage. Uh, that one, believe me, I've tried that one myself as a private attorney many times. Um, but whatever it is, we have a draft motion with the regulations attached to it. What your findings were A through K and then what your legal hardship was. And then you vote on that motion and that's what gets published. And then it can go to court if people want to or not. Um, and so that's why I I'm describing is that that way we have a predictable pattern. That this night we're doing the hearings. We're also doing the hearing decisions that we did from the last month. And next month we'll be doing new hearings and we'll be doing the decisions we we have from the last one. Go ahead, Josh.
Um, how does that work with um not having discussions about the cases out of a hearing or a meeting? An official meeting?
Sure. Once you close that public hearing. You are allowed to still discuss the motion with staff and with the town attorney, right? You can't hear from anybody else. The applicant can never say a word or he just voided the whole decision making process. But you're able to ask questions of me and ask questions of your staff about that proposed motion. And we can help you outside the public hearing.
And nobody, family, not anybody, it's really a, it's just, you you gotta keep it closed. It's got to be unprejudicial.
And I think for me, who's done both sides of it for forty years now. It's easier for me to tell my applicant clients or whatever. This board will be deciding it next month. You don't even have to come because they can't hear you anyways. Right? And I often say to them, if you want to pay me my ten bucks an hour, I will go to the meeting and take notes. Of how the board came to the decision, but guess what? I can't talk either. And believe it or not, ninety nine percent of the time, it's not a problem, they perfectly understand. Because unless the barn's burning down, as we say. And I've never had, really had a case like that. They're busy still working with the architect and figuring out how much money they have from their fifth loan on the house. Then it's really not a problem that they're waiting the next month to get this momentous decision of my terrific board. As to whether they're going to be able to build that extra kitchen or not, right? So it's a big decision and you guys shouldn't feel like, well, public service, you know, I should, we should get that decision right out to them. It's too important a decision from the town perspective. Because if the variance is granted. It's only the staff that's going to get the calls a week or two or a month later to say. Yeah, I was driving down Hay Street and what is that second story thing doing there? Maybe people didn't notice, maybe they were on vacation. But we will take it from there because you've already made your decision and it's in law. And if, and of course, I should all remind you guys that if it's not appealed. Your decision is law fifteen days after it's published. So. The variance goes on the land records, it's recorded. I know, and I'm going to ask Abby this because I'm too embarrassed to look again, but. We have that six month rule on variances that if you're supposed to act on.
You don't file within that six months.
Is it still in there?
As far as I'm aware.
All right. Uh, I don't have the case in front of me, so I can't give it to you folks, but that's basically an illegal condition. Uh, variances by Connecticut law over and over have said you can't put time as a condition on a variance. So if some someone's granted a variance and it's been fifteen days. They should come into the office, they should get their preprinted form that says on five Hay Street, the following variance was granted. And that gets recorded with Dave Campo in the land records. And that thing never leaves the history of that property forevermore. I don't care how many owners acquire that property, the variance stays, right?
Right.
So we we would have tremendous difficulty and I've told many attorneys this, who call me all mad at me. And say, yeah, you can file your extension of the six month variance rule, but. I wouldn't worry about it, I as town attorney cannot see enforcing that rule. So just so you know, what you do is in stone. Once it's been not appealed, it's good to go, okay? Um, so I don't mean to like, you know. Not take this seriously. And so what I'm trying to say is, I think the procedures we're outlining here is a very serious approach to your work, right? You are giving it due deliberation. You've got the hearing in, you've got all your questions in, you heard from everybody. Close the hearing, when you come back the next month, we'll have a prepared. Motion for you to discuss, yea or nay, we don't vote. But it'll have findings that either you didn't find for the variance, which is easy. Every court says, if you didn't find for a variance, you don't even have to give a reason. You just have to say deny it and it'll be, it'll be up, it'll be accepted. It's when you find a variance that the court says, why? What what were your findings for that variance? Odd lot, strange lot, you know, some odd reason ledge on eighty percent of the lot, sixty percent of the lot is wetman. I mean, there are reasons for variance. But if you give the reason, you also give those findings A through K. And then we stamp that, put it in the file and if Avina has to go to court. Well, guess what, I may win, I may win to uphold that variance if I've got the right record, okay? So. You know, hopefully, and I don't know, and I'm going to talk to staff about this. I don't think you have a huge load right now. Where we're going to be so slowing down the process that, you know, you say, well, Rob, I mean, we got twenty items on tonight. You know, we're going to be at it till midnight. I don't think you've found that experience, so we'll keep the flow going with you. So that there be no, you know, backup of applications. And don't forget, you have all the time in the world. I don't think I've ever seen any Z P A take longer than the law allows you to make a decision. Once you close that public hearing. You have sixty five days to make a decision and the applicant give you another sixty five days. So we have plenty of time. Um, I think this will look more deliberate. It allows my newer staff uh and the staff to you folks to be more acquainted. With how we're going to draft up your motions and your findings. And in the end. God bless you all, I was on a Z P A for many years in the town. Far from here, sort of up here, but I found it'd be a different role when I was on a Z P A versus being a town attorney. So I I appreciate the role you're in. Um, but it's not an easy one. It really isn't, it's it's one of the more difficult boards to have to hear appeals. Um, but ones that seem to relish in it for some reason is my Board of Tax Appeals, they. They can listen very quietly and say, nope, your house is worth that much and we're not going to lower. Um, but you folks have to listen very intently and say. You do understand, we're a judicial board that's restricted by law. I need a little more understanding of what your legal hardship is. Uh, the surveyor's done a nice job, we understand where the location is. Now let's hear a little bit more about what the legal hardship is, okay? So it's not just looking at building plans or site plans, you're really looking at the law. And trying to determine what the findings should be about this request. Okay? Um, so it's a, it's a very interesting job. And as I said, if you guys get frustrated and say, why are we getting in these types of applications? Then we should look at the zone that you're getting them in and say, well, maybe we're over killing it here. You know, maybe we need a ten foot side yard in the tiny little ten thousand square foot zone and not a twenty one or fifteen, right? Uh, and when we have those substandard lots, which we still have some in Waterford. Believe me, I track those, I understand completely when you're struggling and saying, there's nothing on this lot. Why does he think he can build on it? Well, it's a residential zone. Good old dear Waterford put water and sewer in front of this lot and suddenly. You don't need a well, you don't need a septic. And you can squeeze a house on it if somebody would give you a five or ten foot variance. Well, now go ahead, Josh.
Well, there's like areas down by the Nantucket River that that were all cottage lots. And they're like six hundred square foot houses and they're all like next to the road and on next to each other and. Their zone, their zone for ten thousand square foot spaces or something like that and they're all five thousand. And that's how the zoning was laid out when it first laid out, they didn't. They didn't really look at it closely, I think, is that is that what happened? They just sort of blanked for you?
Well, again, the problem began that before zoning. Joe, Joe Smith and son came in and laid out three hundred lots along that river, I still have those title search.
Right.
Couldn't possibly build on those other than put up a small shack to run down like you look right now and grab a dip in the Nantucket River. Which actually from Archie was happy to do. Then, you know, nineteen fifty came along and we had zoning and these people started making some money. And they wanted to improve Grandma's house down by the Nantucket River and Waterford. So we, we have to watch those evolutions, right? But now we're going the other direction, which is a very small lot, has water and sewer. And they don't need the separation now between the septic system and the well, right?
Right.
So maybe they should be able to build on that because we were so. Wonderful to give them utilities and public services, right?
Right.
I would be honest, I mean, I don't do this sort of thing because I'm the town attorney, but. And I know Kathy might know about this, but there are still lots in Waterford that people kind of hunt and peck around for and say, hey. That lot's got water, it's got sewer, it's really tiny, but I think I can put a, you know, twelve hundred square foot house or something on it.
Right.
You have to look close, yeah.
They've been taxed for building lots as well, right? Is that, that enters into it as well?
Yeah, it doesn't really, I mean, taxing is different than zoning, every court says so. But it's really hard for somebody to come in and say, my grandparents been taxing this lot. You know, Mike Beckett's made it a building lot and I've been taxed in the building lot for twenty years.
Right.
I mean, it's pretty persuasive, right?
That means you have the right house, I mean, I think it it gives that some, that some leap, is that, is that right or not? That you, if you've been paying to build a lot, building lot, then it's considered?
Nope, nope, but, but I can certainly understand why the board is going to be concerned. And we had that down at the Strand, remember with the family that had the one that was washing up against the ocean?
Yeah, they were.
That's on the books as a seven hundred thousand dollar building.
Right.
You know? And that's what it puts it down there, I think, water and sewer or just water out, but it's got at least one, oh, I know. Remember, Josh, it was about the septic tank.
Right.
They had to put septic, but they didn't have to put water. Can you put a house there? Maybe. The court said it doesn't have to be the eighteen hundred square foot house that they applied for.
Right.
It can be a twelve hundred square foot. So you guys have that flexibility too. That's the next list I wanted to go over with you that I I can't believe this because I haven't noticed it a lot in all these years is. Under twenty seven point six of your zoning regs. In the course of a bold, beheld this, I get this question a lot from clients. You can put terms and conditions on your variance, okay? Not time, time is like the only one they don't let you do. But A, B, C, D, E, F, I will look at those conditions. But often if you feel like, I think they need relief, but I want to condition that relief. You can do it, it gives you just a little bit of flexibility. And it gives you the right to tailor the variance. So that somebody may not affect the fact that the neighbor was concerned that their rabbit hutch is now going to be too close to the garage. Okay, so you can look at that. Um, yeah, that's a pretty good thing. Um, we also have that, as you know, which I think is terrific, uh, you know, some towns don't even have it. It's not required by law that you give certified mail notice to the neighbors. And as you know, we start every meeting by making sure that those notices went out and the green cards came back. Um, that's pretty important. Um, not every town does it. But you're giving somebody the absolute opportunity to come in and say, I moved to this neighborhood. I thought the houses can only be twenty feet long, high, and this Jomoka wants to look out on his boat in the harbor and he wants to go to twenty five. And he has a right to object to that variance. Um, and so you don't want to find out later that those people don't read the New London Day or or they didn't check with the town. And that person went in and got a variance and they knew crickets, all right, so. The the certified mail is a great idea and I know it makes your job harder because you end up with adversaries, but. That's the purpose of the public hearing. Um, the other thing quickly is that, and I know this is very hard, it's even hard for lawyers to understand, is that commercial variances. Are not measured at any different integrity or substance than a residential variance. So that if Lowe's comes in or somebody and and wants to do something. The criteria under Connecticut law is the same for them as it is. For the guy down the street with a, you know, fifteen hundred square foot house in Waterford. It 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 still has to be measured the same way. And so often, and I think Abby's nodding her head. Commercial projects in town bend over backwards trying to avoid the variance process. Because they think of it as a little bit longer in time, more expensive to hire Avina or somebody like him to bring the application. And they're sophisticated enough to know that many times they're going to be denied. So they work very hard at trying to keep their projects within the regs. And what you might see instead that you never see is they'll come in the front door. And ask our planning and zoning commission for a regulation change. That they think is justified so that their project can go forward. Now, you don't expect that from a residential owner. But the point is they're trying to avoid you because they know you guys are tough. And that you have the right to tell them, sorry, follow our regulations or go change them. Now with a residential owner, I don't expect you to send them out the door and tell them to go change the regs, but you can keep a little cheat sheet. And say, you know, we, we keep getting this request. That, you know, accessory buildings in Waterford are too small, we, you know, people want them to be bigger, they want them to be in law apartments. So whatever the problem is, and you report that back to your town. And say, hey, you know, Kathy, you know, she's like, yeah, people are looking for that kind of housing these days. Why don't we make accommodation, right? So unfortunately, in the individual case, they may not get relieved. Down the road, we can reconsider the regs themselves with your guys' input. And see what the town can do, because I love this town, they have very flexible talent. I think we get a lot of comments like Jordan Village, you know, we're looking at the reg changes, we did Mago Point. Uh, you know, we've done a lot of areas of town, we were trying to accommodate different type of housing and different opportunities. But uh, we can't always do it on a one on one basis that everybody's following the zone and then here comes. You know, I I won't put, yeah, I shouldn't say this, but you know, here comes somebody from out of state or something. you know, I won't put, yeah, I shouldn't say this, but you know, here comes somebody from out of state or something that says, no, I'm going to be smarter than everybody else. I bought a small house, but I'm going to double its size. I just need a couple of variants. Well, we would have done that in town if we'd known that. We don't really respect the regs. So you guys look at that too. That's pretty much, you know, given the quake ill situation, I wasn't able to spend as much time on this as, as I could have in last week. But I think that's my message. Working with staff, setting up your meetings, having those draft motions ready to go, having a good public hearing. Now, one last thing, which I know is Kathy and Josh's favorite, Roberts Rule of the Board. Okay? So when you go to make motions and when you go to make seconds and when you go to make amendments to the motions, we should follow, the town in Waterford basically follows Roberts Rule of the Board. We don't have any local regs for you guys to make motions with. We look for the motion in the motion book. So every discussion should start out with a motion. It doesn't matter that the motion gets amended or tabled or revoked. But we, we need to say, okay, we're on application number 1384. Is there a motion on the table? And then somebody should either read the motion that we'll probably have in draft for you, A or N. You can read either motion, but you read the motion into the record. The board looks for a second, which sometimes they get. You don't have to worry about making a second. That's just for purposes of discussion. You can vote the other way later. And believe me, I've seen a lot of ZBAs be persuaded either way. But you make the motion, you second it, and then you begin the discussion on the motion. And we can even table that discussion at some point and say, we're going to continue this discussion. Yeah, sorry, it's my next move. During the discussion, yes, staff and your town attorney can enter into that discussion with you with the motion on the floor. You can make a motion to amend it. And then there are the other various motions that are in Roberts Rules. So that will be on the record. Don't forget, we have to tape your debate as well as the public hearing. That's the new law. So the judges, I can't believe it. The judges are actually very interested when I'm in court in your deliberations. They like that tape as much as the public hearing tape. So when you're in deliberations, folks, act deliberate, you know? Calmly address your other board members. Keep the public out, keep the applicant out. And discuss the motion that's in front of you and be polite, you know, oh, I recognize this person next or whatever. Because that actual deliberation now, unlike when I early started practicing, goes into the court record. And they'll say, Attorney Medina, like, what was your board doing? You know, when, when we get to deliberations, we can't introduce any new evidence into your deliberations. I can't run out and do a title search. This is an actual case. I can't go do a title search of the lot that you guys are looking at after the public hearing is closed and bring it into you guys and produce it as evidence. I, that was overruled even as town attorney. So I can be there to discuss the evidence that's already in the file. But I can't introduce, you can't say to me, Rob, come next month with another, you know, legal title search of the property. I can bring cases. I can't bring new evidence to you. Okay? But we can just discuss the decision. All right? And then finally you take it to vote. We count the votes and you folks all know it takes at least four votes out of five to get a variance. And a lot of people don't want you to go forward with four members. Because lawyers are like, oh boy, I don't know if I can go four, nothing. I might have a shot at, you know, five, one or, or good matchup. So.
The applicant has to, too, right?
Well, I'm sorry?
The applicant has to agree to go with less than a quorum.
They don't have to? There's no law on that, Josh? We are very polite about that. I hope, you know, we say, we have four tonight. Do you want to proceed? Or would you like us to table it and find out if we can get five for next month? Right?
Right. Well, with four, you have to have a unanimous decision.
Yep. But I have been in situations where lawyers say, I'm ready. You know, I know you have a quorum. You have four members available. I'm ready to proceed. So that's pretty much the bulk of your work, guys. And I take some questions from you. We also have today, a very large book. Don't worry. I don't want to scare you. But this is an amazing seminar. That's a 2019 seminar. So that's pretty fresh. And in there, there's this ZBA section of this seminar. And I'm going to work with Jill a little bit and see if we can call out the important parts of it for a ZBA and send it out to you guys electronically. Just to kind of give you a refresher. And I would also urge everybody and I, is Michelle on? Is it?
Yes.
Okay. And, and some of our newer members, again, I'm Town Attorney Rob Medina. We have funds for you guys to go sort of pre-COVID and post-COVID or something or on tape. We have these seminars and things you can attend to be a, I know, a, a fully informed ZBA member. And since you're hired and elected for four-year terms, you can't forget that people expect you to be up and running and understand your job within a certain amount of time within your term. So refresher costs, courses are good. An initial courses on ZBA law and procedure are good. It's going to help you understand what everybody's talking about. So that's what I have. I could take questions and I'm going to be working with your staff obviously going forward.
Rob, I have to jump off. I have to be someplace. Um, and I just wanted to tell you my home phone number is wrong on the sheet that you sent out last week or week before sometime in the last month. So I'll send you my correct home phone number.
Yes, please. Thank you, Kathy.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Could I?
Sure.
We, could I make a suggestion that, that, that A through K, that, that's two, seven, five, or whatever it was? Could that be included in the package every, every meeting?
It will be.
Okay.
And suggested ways that you, that they apply to the application before you will be in the package. Okay? So we're going to do a little more early homework to just point out what the, what the claim is in the application and how A through K affects it.
Right. One of the things you said, reasonable use. That's a broad term.
Let's talk about that just for a minute. It is a broad term, but most courts would say the reasonable use is either been established or not yet been established. That's a very good way to think about it. Reasonable use in a residential zone is not growing blueberries. Okay? You can't say, well, I know you don't have a house on there. There's no other use you can make in the zone but a single family house, but your blueberries look great. So we have to look at whether it's a raw lot or built lot. If it's an improved lot, then reasonable use really comes to bear. Because if it's a 1,200 square foot house and they say, we just can't fit Grandma in. You know, sorry, but maybe it's the wrong house for you because another family could use it. You can sell it. So the courts are pretty strict about reasonable use. Once there's a use that fits the zone. If we're restrictive on our use, then we run into the problem of somebody saying, what else you want me to do with this lot? I, I need, I need something that the, the zone allows me to do. So that's a start.
Thank you.
And again, I, I don't mean to abandon anybody. When you get into, and I'll check with Jill and I'm going to get a copy of your agendas. I'm going to get a copy of your applications. Whenever you're actually faced with like a reasonable use question, somebody owns a lot and they don't know what to do with it. I, I'm going to be looking at it. I'm going to try to help you. That could be a real reason to give relief. You know, we, we, we're going to want to look at that situation.
Is there an updated zoning regs book for this year or is it pretty much what it was last year? Is there any change?
I'm coming. There have been modifications even in the last few months to the zoning regulations. So you should be getting in your next packet a, a copy of, of the new book. And what we'll do, typically what we do, we'll give everybody an update. And once we give that update, then we will just send you sections as they're available. Usually it involves definitions. Maybe something in section three for general uses and then wherever that specific term comes in. So we'll make sure that everybody has the most reason for the next meeting.
Yeah. And again, it's the electronic age. I'm struggling with it as much as anybody else. But I really think we can check with staff, but if you want to bring laptops or iPads that help you easily open up to the Waterford regulations, because then when we amend them, they automatically come up electronically. We all got to learn to do that. I see guys in court doing that. Flips me out. I'm sitting there with books and my, you know, and my brief and they're sitting there going. But they went to law school 30 years later than I did. But we have to think about that because it really is important that you do what Mr. McKenzie is doing. I mean, you want to look like you're, you're studying the issue, right? You, you want to look like you're trying to analyze what the person is saying to you in terms of our regulations. So you can ask them questions and say, I, I don't, I don't understand. Can you go over section 27 again? You have to give us your legal hardship. I, I don't, I'm sorry you don't understand that. Go, go hire a lawyer and come back next month, but we need to hear from you. Right? If they're silent, that means you're silent because you didn't get a legal hardship explanation from the applicant. We're not supposed to spoon feed them. They, they have to know what they're doing there. All right? This is not self-serve. When people call me, you know, in private practice, I'll take very few variance cases. Because I'm like, I'm sorry, I don't understand how you think we're going to go in there with a straight face and, and give them that, that explanation. Right? So you guys face that a lot. Self-serve people or self, what's one of them? Self-servants, you know, the pro se, they're just coming in and they're just laying the file in front of you and saying, that's it. I'm done. Does he mean any questions? Yeah, we have a lot of questions. Right? How, how does this affect you? What's the reasonable use? Where's the legal hardship? Okay? And we can help you with that because we do want to make a clear record. Whenever you grant a variance, we, we don't want to lose. I hate to lose. I have not lost many town cases in my career because usually towns win. So we want a case that you can win and we want a clear record. That's what I'm shooting for.
Um, I just have a couple of quick questions. Um, it's to my understanding that a lot of the planning and zoning in town, well, specifically the lots themselves and how they were zoned, the building lots. A lot of these were divided up, sold and have been residential areas since before these zoning laws were even in action. Um, and now if you go to 27.5, the criteria for decision, it specifically says in here, the existence of conditions of the same kind and or character on other properties within surrounding neighborhood. That's part B of 27.
Yeah, I see it. Yeah.
And then up here it says, of past ownership patterns involving property in question and adjacent properties and changes in the zoning regulations, which has occurred since the lot in question was created. So now if most of these lots were created before our zoning specifically was enacted, how do they not almost automatically get a variance just based on the first two criteria for which we would make a decision?
Because before you get to A through K, remember that is supplemental to the statute. Okay? These are additional findings you have to make. You're, and when I started out today, I said, your initial duty is under Connecticut general statute. And I read from the Fuller book that you have to find what's the magic word. It's called a legal hardship before you can go to the town criteria. The legal hardship is, you're right. You have a smaller lot than everybody else. But Mr. Red Arsenal or somebody put a house on that lot. It's not what everybody wants these days. I don't know what we're doing with all the area. I guess we use it for starring all our stuff. But those houses, some of them in town are 1,200, 1,300, 1,400 square foot. You know, that's what I grew up in. But it fits on the lot and it's, and it's fine. But if you go to add to that building, right? And you're on a smaller lot that was built before zoning in Waterford, you're going to cross over our present zoning. So what Josh was just asking is, is it a reasonable use that you already have a house on the lot? It just doesn't have a garage. And they're saying, but I want a garage. Right? Do you give them the variance to give them a garage? When you don't, that, that, what's the legal hardship not to have a garage? The car gets wet? My father never put our car in a garage when we grew up. He thought it would get too warm in there. I don't know. It's a strange theory, but you see what I'm saying? So.
Well, hold on, before we get to.
So think of use, think of hardship.
What is the definition of a legal hardship to Connecticut in that statute?
Yeah. I mean, they don't define it. They say you must find it. Okay? Then all the court cases define what the legal hardship is. And why I'm getting into reasonable use is the legal hardship must be peculiar to that lot and deny somebody a reasonable use of the lot. That's what a legal hardship is in Connecticut. You must find that there's a peculiarity to that lot that renders it impossible to have a reasonable use of the lot.
And, and so a lot itself being divided before the zoning laws were enacted, isn't reasonable for hardship?
It could be if, like I said 10 minutes ago, in Waterford, we have some lots that were divided in 1940 and 1930 before we had subdivision law and zoning law, right? Those lots, some of them still exist. Because for years before Waterford hit Millstone, we didn't have sep, we had septic systems and not sewers. And we had public wells instead of water. That lot sat there. Because you tried to put a house on it with a well and a septic, right? And you can't do it. It's an unbuildable, unbillable lot. Once you put water and sewer in, you can come in and we've had three or four of these cases, Josh remembers, we have one up by Broad Street there near the pizza place. Our local attorney in London brought it in and said, this family has owned this lot since 1910. And they never built on it. But now it's got water and sewer. And so what that it's 30 feet wide and 100 feet long? We want to build on it because we can fit a house, but we need a variance. The neighbors came in like crazy. I don't, we had 20 people in there from that little neighborhood up there around Broad Street and right on the London border there. And they all said, you've got to be kidding me. If you put a house in there and we're all going to be on top of it. We denied it. They went to court and we lost. And the judge said, sorry, but they're going to squeeze a little. That house is there today and people living with it. It's behind the doctor's office on 85. So you can take a left on 85 across from People's Bank. There's a doctor's office and behind the doctor's office is a little neighborhood. And it's right, almost right there. It's like, it looks like a, you know, rectangular house that goes straight back like a house from Baltimore or Georgetown or something. And it got built circa 2005 or so. So you're right that there are cases in which a difficult lot needs relief. If a lot has ledge on half of it and they can't even get a decent sized house on it, a court would say, don't turn them away because they can build a 310 square foot house. That's a, that's kind of a tiny house, right? I mean, they need a reasonable use of the lot. So let them move the lot up to the front line, leave the ledge so they don't hire cobalut to blast it out for two years. And, and let them have a smaller front yard. That's probably a justifiable variance, right? But you really don't want to remove all that green. And you need to relieve, right? But if they come back and say, well, now the house is still too small and I'm from New Jersey and I need a bigger house. It's like, wait a minute. Wait, you got a house on the lot. Who tells you you can double the size now? It's a little give and take kind of thing, right? You give something, but you don't keep giving all the time. So we can help you review when it's necessary, but I'm not here to tell you that it's a quiet night. No neighbors rode in, nobody objected. You know, somebody comes in, they're looking for a bigger garage. You know, are you using the same criteria you use against Walmart to add a bigger Walmart? Yeah, you're supposed to. But do people say, well, you know, we'll give them a five foot side variance and let them put the bigger garage up? It's the same law, guys. That's all I'm here to tell you. I, I, I don't want to break the news to you, but it's the same criteria. And often emotions and the lack of opposition. One neighbor coming in, I bet you, who says, I don't want that garage a foot closer to me. And I bet you, you're going to deny it because why would you want to put that neighbor through that? Right? We had one of those down on Gunshot Road or somewhere down there. Guy wanted a bigger garage and the neighbor said, well, it's going to be too close to me. I, I, my wife is upset. So you get it both ways, right? So we can help you, but I just wanted to sit with you today because you guys are an important board to the town. You want everyone to the extent possible to be treated equally within the same zone. So that when they get tired of the little raise. So that when they get tired of the little raised, well, we made even a raised ranch, if they get tired of the ranch house in, in Hay Street in Waterford, they're going to move up to Waterford Village. That's what half my parents' neighbors did. Okay, fine, they're growing up to the big neighborhood, they're going to get a bigger house, we're going to stay here, we'll build in the basement. So you don't want them to say, well, I kind of like this neighborhood and the kids like their friends, so we're just kind of going to bump out the house while we can, we'll go get a variance. It's not, that's not really what we're doing here, right? We're trying to keep the neighborhoods in the position they were in in nineteen fifty. If we want to change that zone and allow for bigger houses in the neighborhood, that's fine, write us a note. And we'll see what planning and zoning wants to do about it, right? So it's, it's, it's each case we have to look at one by one. You're like a judge who sits there all day hearing, my friend's a good judge. He hears cases all day, they're all different, they're all different, even divorces, everyone he hears is a little different. Every hate case you guys hear, it's going to be a little different facts and you have to look at the facts and we'll help you. It's not, it's fun, but it takes a couple hundred of these cases to get used to the idea of what's a hardship, what isn't, what's relief, what's too much relief, what about the A through K criteria? But you don't get to our criteria till you find a legal hardship. And sometimes that's hard to do.
Okay. Are we going to continue this another time?
Absolutely. And I want to do it to everybody because when the alternates come in, they need to know the same thing you guys know.
We should try to maybe plan a longer in advance and make sure that everybody's able to attend or something.
Maybe later in the day, I have no trouble with that, I know we're doing different things, but.
Before, three o'clock's difficult for a lot of people because they work and I have my own business, I can take off. Other people are in the middle of things, so.
Now, we, we will start getting back to evenings a little bit. I know it's harder for staff in the evenings and we've had a lot of crashes of zoning in the evening, so we're we're sort of balancing. Again, folks, this ain't easy, you know, COVID is not fun, so someday we're going to try to get back together. Sorry, I'm over here.
Or can we close?
A motion to adjourn is in order.
The motion is on. Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, nobody?
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, thanks. Take care.